Good morning, everybody. I'm Senator Sean Ryan. I'm the Chair of the Commerce, Economic Development, and Small Business Committee. I'm honored to be co-hosting this hearing with my colleague Senator Jessica Ramos, the Chair of the Labor Committee. Today's topic is non-compete agreements. These are agreements an employee or independent contractor signs when they're brought onboard to complete work for an employer or a business. They're actually a contract. You know, theoretically, you're giving something up and you're agreeing to get something. So there's consideration and it limits an employee's ability to work in a similar job or similar position in an economy. While it's implied that it's a negotiated contract, often these clauses appear in employment onboarding materials. Sometimes a standalone agreement, usually not. Usually, they're closer to what we call an adhesion contract where it's you're offered a lot of materials when you come onboard to a company. You sign them and in there is a non-compete, but there's really no back and forth negotiations. Employers are, you know, employees frequently get those as sort of a take it or leave it part of coming on. So broadly, the agreements prohibit an employee from seeking or getting a job with any employer's competition. Sometimes they're geographic limitations. Sometimes, like in some of the testimony you'll hear today, they're based on skill sets. You can't use your skill set in another company. Sometimes employers are asked to buy out of their non-compete agreement. So they're prevalent across the industries. You know, at one point, you used to think of non-compete as being in high-tech field or in, you know, high, high-level executives, but they're really everywhere. They're in the hospitality industry, they're in recreation industry, they're in healthcare professions. So, you know, they're all around the economy. They're becoming more of a boilerplate part of a onboarding process. So you would think the agreements are prevalent because they must benefit businesses, but you'll hear in testimony, and we have written testimony from, you know, publicly traded companies saying that they think the non-compete agreements are actually bad for businesses because it makes it hard to attract employers at all. So while an individual employer might benefit from a non-compete, the field certainly does it and the economy certainly doesn't, but it prevents talent from moving from one place to the next in the economy. It's what some economists call a clog in the economy. So we want our economy to be as free market as possible. People can work what they want, you know, get a new job when they want, you know, quit what they want when they want. If somebody offers better working conditions, you can go there. If you want to move, you can do that. But this is one of the things that causes a clog in the economy. And so instead of the free market dictating, they're dictated by these adhesion contracts. And they also limit entrepreneurship. So if you're working for a company and you say, "I want to go do something else," maybe start my own thing, often you can't do it. So we're going to learn a lot today, but I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Senator Ramos. And I look forward to hearing the testimony today.
All right. Well, buenos dias, everyone. I'm Jessica Ramos, State Senator and Chair of the Labor Committee here. And, you know, one of my favorite missions as Chair of the Labor Committee really is to advance legislation that identifies the levers unscrupulous employers use too often to keep workers at a disadvantage. And as we will hear today through your testimony, these restrictive contracts are keeping skilled workers out of the labor pool, just like my colleague Sean Ryan stated. And our entire economy is suffering for it. I truly do believe that. I mean, five states and Washington DC have now enacted legislation banning non-compets. And we, of course, here in New York, don't like to fall behind. Senator Ryan's proposed legislation bans any employer in New York from utilizing non-compete agreements and offers private right of action with a two-year statute of limitations for employees. We know that these agreements are used to keep bad employers in business by forcing employees to stay in abusive environments. And you know I don't like that. And so limiting their options within their industry and geographic location is really important. Senator Ryan's legislation is actually on my Labor Committee agenda for later on today. So I appreciate Senator Ryan and his team bringing these workers and stakeholders together so that we can fact find before we advance this bill to the floor today. And of course, it is always important to hear stories from workers as we deliberate. And so hopefully, these stories will remain fresh in our minds as we make this change here in New York State. So thank you for working with me, Senator Ryan, and let's get started.
That's great. Thank you, Senator Ramos. You know, in my opening statement, I wanted to add one point. There's a lot of confusion about non-compets and what this would do. Let's be clear of what it doesn't do. It doesn't alter the employee's or employer's ability to maintain trade secrets. You know, this bill doesn't touch this. It doesn't alter, you know, the ability of an employee to leave with client information. This doesn't touch that. It allows businesses to maintain all their legitimate business interests as those protections are codified in other areas of the law, but they don't, we don't touch that in these. And there has been some confusion about that, so I wanted to get out there. First person is Dr. Morgan Stephens, chiropractor?
Come on down. You're next on The Price is Right.
Nobody wants to be first.
[laughing].
Thanks for coming in today. And tell us, tell us how non-compete have affected your life.
Oh, gosh, they've done a number. So I was given a 25-mile radius non-compete for two years. So in the area that I live in, that's pretty significant because it's a 45 to 60-minute drive in any direction. And if you go north, you're in Canada, and I'm not licensed to practice in Canada, so it really limits where I'm allowed to. It limits what I can do for work, you know, applying for jobs after getting let go. You know, I'm very overqualified for a lot of positions. So the positions I was applying for were minimum wage, and I have hundreds of thousands of dollars of student loan debt, and minimum wage doesn't begin to even touch that, as well as, you know, my level of education. I just feel like it's kind of a little bit of a waste to use my education for not really anything that's relevant to what I went to school for. It's been a financial strain on myself and my family emotionally, mentally. It's been a strain. Just not being able to be there to support my family in those types of situations has been a real struggle.
So tell us a little bit, you're a chiropractor?
Yes.
And what did your agreement, you know, limit? Did you leave the chiropractor's office?
No, no. I had a meeting with my boss about some of the things that I was concerned about in practice, and some of those things were just the level of care that people were receiving. And I just didn't agree with some of his methods, and I was hoping to come to an understanding or an agreement or a compromise. And three days later, he called me in on a Sunday and told me not to come back. So that's what happened.
And so in the normal economy, you would go seek another job in the profession?
Right, right.
And why can't you do that?
Because I have a non-compete in my contract that states I'm not allowed to be a chiropractor within 25 miles of the city of Watertown for two years.
So that non-compete holds even if you're not quitting the business?
Yeah, I had brought that up, and I was like, even though I'm not the one choosing to leave, like you are letting me go, I'm still liable to this non-compete.
So you got let go by your company and told that now you can't work in the economy anywhere within 25 miles?
Yes.
What's the penalty if you violate that?
I'm not sure. A court hearing, you know, being sued, I'm really, I wasn't sure.
Can you go start your own business?
Um, I could, outside the 25-mile radius. Yeah.
So you can't work for anyone else?
Right.
And you can't start your own office?
Right.
So you're trapped?
Pretty much.
Are there other people in your practice who are suffering under similar things?
I was the only other chiropractor in this office, aside from the husband and wife that I did work for. So no, everybody else was just, you know, a receptionist or a chiropractic assistant or there's a massage therapist and acupuncturist who were there as well, but I'm not sure they had to sign any non-compets. I've never, I never heard about them having to sign anything.
You live in the area where you practice?
I sure do.
So if you had to move, if you had to do this, if you had to comply with a radius, how would you even do it?
It would be, it would be a big move, and my husband, who, you know, we obviously live together, he would now travel, you know, an hour and a half to get to work instead of the 30 minutes that he would have to travel now. So it would be, you know, more time, more money spent in gas and that type of situation.
And did you ever think this was going to be an outcome of this?
Absolutely not.
When you signed that agreement?
No.
Did you discuss it with your employer?
I had asked if we could negotiate the non-compete before I signed it because 25 miles felt a bit excessive, and he said yes. And then when he let me go, they had said that I am not entitled to that and that the non-compete stands.
And the people in your vicinity need chiropractic care?
They sure do.
So it's not as if your area is oversaturated with chiropractors?
No, no.
So you're, so it's preventing?
Yes.
Healthcare deliveries?
Yes.
To your area?
Absolutely.
Any questions?
Um, yeah. I am troubled by this idea that medical professionals are, you know, somehow held back from giving care to the people that they want to serve because I would imagine that above all, you want to help the people you've grown up with or the people in your community, right? Why do you think that your former employer had you sign a non-compete agreement?
Um, I have a few choice words for him, but I'll keep those to myself for now.
Okay.
I think he probably had me sign it just due to the fact that it is a, it's a small town and there are not a lot of chiropractors. So on top of him creating this business himself, I can only imagine that he wanted to, you know, continue to help the people the way that he wanted and didn't want to lose clientele based on having somebody that somebody could have liked more.
So it sounds like he feels threatened by younger talent who might actually improve standards for care and overall the industry.
Yes. He had, he has been in practice for 20 years and I have done this for three. So there's a significant age gap between us. So I think, you know, being threatened about newer methods and newer ideas might definitely be-
This is the way things have always been done?
Yeah.
Type of thing?
Yeah.
Very interesting. Now, I hope, I hope not to pry, so feel free to, but can you, you shared a little bit about, you know, your husband, obviously, his work and, you know, not wanting to commute an hour and a half.
Sure.
But can you talk a little bit more about the personal financial burden that the non-compete has left on you?
Yeah, so not being able to be a chiropractor in this area and, you know, having the level of education that I do have, and, you know, he has a great job and he's done great things and, you know, he is able to work overtime and get, you know, a significant amount of money from that. It just makes it challenging because we do, you know, have two dogs and we, you know, that bill's our thing. And we, we have families in the area as well as, you know, house and, and car payments and all of those types of things. So for me to put all of that on him is a bit of a strain.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay.
So in some ways, you were achieving your dream of coming back to your home community-
Right, right.
-to provide healthcare. And because of the non-compete, you're really almost unable-
Yes.
...to do it.
I'm sorry, do they, do they talk to you about non-compets in med school?
No. No, that's not really, that was never brought up.
Did you think to speak it over with an attorney?
I had, and that's when they had suggested that I ask to negotiate it. And then when I had asked and he said it was, you know, open for negotiation, shall something happen? And then something happened and it was no longer open for negotiation.
So had you, had you signed, you signed the non-compete before negotiating?
Um, I was given the non-compete. I gave it to an attorney to read over. She said to bring it back and ask for a negotiation, and I did. And he said, "We'll negotiate it, you know, if the time comes." And then I signed it, thinking that we would be able to negotiate.
Okay, lesson learned for everybody in the room. Don't sign things that you don't agree to.
Right?
Okay. Very good.
And it also shows you the unequal bargaining power-
Yes, absolutely.
-in that situation. Well, I really thank you for, you know, for coming in today, you know, making yourself available and telling your story. And hopefully, with your help, we can pass laws that make it so people won't be in your position again.
Yes, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, Doctor.
Thanks for coming.
Good morning.
Miriam, thanks for coming today.
Thanks for having us.
What do you have for us?
All right, so I've been practicing employment law for 35 years. I'm a partner at Ritz-Clark and Ben Asher and the Chair of the Neela New York Legislative Committee. So I know you've gotten and you will be getting a lot of information about the economic data concerning the negative effects of non-compets, not only on employees, but on the economy as a whole. So I thought that maybe since I was a practitioner, it would help if I took a look at who exactly gets sued in New York as a result of non-compete. So I actually just did a Lexis search for people who got sued in the last two years. And this isn't all of them, but it's a good description. There's a lot, by the way. So they run the gamut. So we have a home health aide, a nurse anesthetist, a mid-level sales employee, a senior project manager, an investment banker, a financial planner, and a software salesperson. So these are just the people who got sued. This doesn't include the people who were afraid to go get other jobs. These are the people who actually went far enough to get the other job and get sued. So a report issued by the JAO, which I link to in my materials, confirms that nationwide non-compets are weaponized against employees at all income and professional levels. While in some of the reported cases, the court did refuse to issue an immediate injunction against the person going to the new job, in each case, the litigation was painful and costly for the employee. And in most cases, by the time the case is over, the job is long gone. So as I said before, of course, this is the tip of the iceberg because many people, like the doctor that you just heard from, never get to the point of litigation, right? From the word "go," their prospects are severely limited. So how do employees end up getting bound by non-compets? Well, you heard one story. In our experience, and this is confirmed by the JAO report, many employees have no idea that they're bound by non-compets at all. I recently talked to a woman who signed a non-compete in 1996 and had no idea that she had signed it. She's getting ready to leave the employer, and they pulled out this thing that was, you know, done on a typewriter in Courier font and said, "Guess where you can't work." In many situations, employees are required to sign them after they start a new job. So I had someone recently who did not have a non-compete, but his employer was bought by another employer, and they said, "To keep your job, you need to sign this." As you said, Senator Ryan, many people sign them at the beginning of the job as part of an onboarding process, right? There's a pile of papers or a whole bunch of things to just click through, and you have no idea, but you've signed a non-compete. So also, as has been discussed, even high-level and sophisticated employees have no bargaining power when it comes to these. So recently, I had someone who was told by a recruiter, "Don't worry, this employer never enforces non-compets." And it took a Pacer search, that's the online, you know, litigation search function, to see that in fact this employer sues people all over the country all the time. But the employee is lulled into believing that it's really not a problem, or as the doctor said, "You can negotiate it later. Let's just sign it now and we'll negotiate it later." So it's true, it's great to consult with a lawyer before you sign one of these, but what kind of an economy do we have where every time somebody gets a job, they have to consult with a lawyer? My daughter was faced with a non-compete when she went to work for a doggy daycare in Brooklyn, right? Should she have to, I mean, she's lucky, her mother's a lawyer. I said, "Don't worry, I'll defend you."
High-level executive with trade secrets?
Exactly. Right, she can't work, right? Independent contractor making minimum wage can't work for any other doggy daycare in the whole borough of Brooklyn, right? She has a mother who's a lawyer, so I told her, you know, probably not enforceable, "Don't worry, you get free Leo counsel." But there are people who work for that doggy daycare who do this for a living, right? And this is a real hardship to them. Even if some lawyer would take their case, they're afraid. So what happens when a non-compete is enforced? I think it's important to sort of describe this because it's scary. So the first thing that happens is the employer's lawyer goes to court and gets a temporary restraining order, right? A temporary restraining order you can get without the other side even knowing about it or being present. It's an ex parte order. New employer runs to court and says, "Judge, I am being irreparably harmed because this girl is working for another doggy daycare." Then there's a preliminary injunction hearing. Now, at the preliminary injunction hearing, sometimes the new employer sues, I'm sorry, the former employer also sues the new employer. At this point, most of the time, the whole issue is irrelevant. The new employer wants nothing to do with this, right? The new employer's going to back down. They need this like a hole in the head. In the rare cases where the case actually goes forward, those are the ones that I just read to you, the case moves forward quickly because the former employer is alleging irreparable harm. That's what you have to prove to get a preliminary injunction. Even if the former employer loses that motion, the case goes on. The case can go on for years with the former employer seeking money damages from the poor employee. Even if the employee wins the case, she has to pay many thousands of dollars in legal fees to defend herself, even if she was right all along. So to repeat, most cases don't get this far. In a typical situation, the new employer has no interest in being involved in the dispute and just rescinds the job offer, right? Or refuses to hire the employee in the first place once they find out that there's a non-compete. The employee learns she's covered by a non-compete like the doctor, we heard, and she's afraid to leave her job at all, or she feels forced to move out of state. We lawyers cannot advise clients under the current law as to whether non-compets are enforceable. The law is too complicated. There is a reasonableness requirement. I set forth a law in my papers, but I just want to say that on the ground, it is impossible for a lawyer to interpret or even predict what a court is going to do. So for example, there's language in the New York case law that the law disfavors non-compets that involve long periods of time in large geographic areas. But in one of the cases I told you about, just over a year ago, a New York court upheld a three-year non-compete against a sales manager that covered the entire North American To make things even more confusing, under the current law, courts can blue pencil an agreement. That means they take the non-compete and they rewrite it to make it what they think is more reasonable, right? So there's this case, for example, where a dentist had a non-compete, and the court rewrote it to say, "Well, you can practice dentistry, but not oral surgery." Right? So if you go to the dentist and you need a cavity filled, that's fine, but if you also happen to need a root canal, he has to send you elsewhere. Completely unpredictable. Okay, so who's harmed by these clauses? So the JAO report cites studies that show tech workers move away from states that allow the enforcement of non-compets. Non-compets result in increased wage disparities, especially disfavor women and black employees. Increased enforcement of non-compets really helps people choose, especially in the tech industry, to choose to switch fields. And of course, as we heard, individual employees suffer devastating economic consequences. Now, but who else is harmed? Well, consumers are harmed by non-compets because doctors and dentists have to abandon their patients and their neighborhoods in order to continue practicing. I just want to say that it is ironic that lawyers, who are the huge beneficiary of this crazy messy law, lawyers are not allowed to engage in non-compets. Why? Because our relationships with our clients are deemed to be so sacrosanct that they can't be interfered with. Why should our relationships with our clients be any more sacrosanct than the doctor's relationship with her patients or her neighborhood or her community? So as we've discussed, the state economy is also harmed because tech workers choose to go elsewhere. Employers choose to go elsewhere, as the testimony that you say you've received reveals. So how does the law need to be changed? Well, I think it should be clear that no halfway solution to this problem is possible. We need to end, once and for all, the senseless, expensive, and economically devastating litigation factory that is a result of our current law. All non-compets should be banned across the board for workers of all income levels. Non-compets that are currently in place also need to be non-enforceable. Without this provision, this non-compete litigation machine will go on for years, like this woman who signed one back in 1996. Employers should be required to notify their employees that non-compets are not enforceable, or these ghost non-compets will continue to chill employee mobility. Quasi-non-compete agreements, such as agreements that are known as traps, should also be banned. These are agreements, they're not really agreements, they're contracts of adhesion, where employers make employees pay back large amounts of money for their training. Surprise, we invested $20,000 in training you, and if you compete, you've got to pay it back. Finally, employers should not be allowed to circumvent this by putting, this is a favorite, a choice of law provision in a New York contract that says it actually is covered by Idaho law, because Idaho law allows non-compets. And finally, and this is important, the Attorney General and the DOL should be empowered to enforce the law so that workers no longer have to hire lawyers like us and pay us to defend themselves against actions brought by employers. The time has come for New York to protect its workers and consumers and to grow its economy by enacting a complete ban right now on all post-employment non-compets and quasi-non-compets. These restrictions cause catastrophic harm to workers at all levels of the economy, and they protect only those employers who fear that they cannot otherwise compete in an open and fair market. Thank you.
Miriam, I'm sold. Good work.
You wrote the bill.
Yeah.
You're sold.
So, so let me ask you a question.
Yep.
And maybe we can draw a few points out, but in the healthcare aide, who is under a non-compete that you referenced?
Yep, yep.
Sort of two, two questions is, why does anybody want a healthcare aide under a non-compete?
Well, the employer argued that she would take clients with her, that-
That's not how the healthcare aide business works, right?
Well, you know, it's certainly, she didn't have any access to trade secrets, right?
Yeah.
But it is possible, I suppose, that in the community, this healthcare aide was well-beloved by a network of families, right? And so just like a chiropractor is known in the community, right? And so by enforcing the non-compete, this healthcare agency, I guess, decides that if they enforce it against one person, they can enforce it against anyone, and they can artificially create a monopoly, right?
Could it lead to wage suppression?
Inevitably leads to wage suppression. I mean, that, the JAO found that not only do non-compets lead to wage disparities, in most cases, they lead to wage suppression as well.
So the healthcare aide, who's often on the lower end of the pay spectrum, this would prevent them from taking a raise and going to work somewhere else?
Exactly.
So they'd have to stay in their lower-paid job?
Exactly. That's right.
And I know, you know, the former witness talked about, you know, consulting an attorney, having an attorney look at contracts. You know, that's from a doctor. I can't imagine a healthcare aide having the resources available to have an attorney, you know, look at the contract or help when they're trying to leave, which then leads to your Attorney General being given the rights.
Right, I mean, dividing it into two pieces, right? Even if the healthcare attorney had the resources to consult with me, for example, I can't give her, under the law, really clear direction, right? I can't tell her whether it's enforceable or not enforceable. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't, depends on the geography, depends on the judge, right? I mean, it's not, consulting a lawyer can be helpful, but it's probably not going to be definitive in most cases. And so certainly, she can come after the fact, but at that point, probably the new employer has been scared away by the threatening letter that it received from the old employer.
That's all it takes usually, right?
Yeah, yeah. Or even before that, sometimes people's contracts say, "Here's your non-compete, clause one. Clause two, you promise that you will show any new prospective employer, clause one." So new prospective- So, new prospective employer looks at clause one and says, I'm not going to hire you. This, you're too much of a headache for me.
Fascinating.
I have a few. I'm wondering, do, when the defendant wins the case, is there relief for the defendant with their legal fees?
No.
Nothing?
No, no, they get to take the new job, assuming it's still there.
And is there a place where employees who need an attorney can go to seek affordable or free?
Legal Services has an excellent employment law unit, but they're incredibly busy and backed up. And it's often, by the time it gets to this point, as I said, it's often, the whole thing is moot. The new job doesn't exist anymore. Everybody has moved on. It is true that very, very high-level employees in the past used to be able to get new employers to agree to represent and indemnify them, if this ever happened. But the home health worker does not have that bargaining power, and truthfully, I haven't seen that in a really long time.
Okay. You mentioned DOL enforcement. I often am very worried that, you know, the DOL with its very limited resources is actually enforcing any of the laws that we pass and implement. Can you speak a little to what type of DOL enforcement you would like to see? What would the ideal enforcement system look like?
Well, I think the ideal enforcement system, and I have not discussed with DOL, would start out with notice and education, right? So first, DOL would need to, it would need to be a public education campaign, like DOL has certainly done in the past, and that they're doing like with salary transparency now, a public education campaign. So I think that would go a long way to start with. And then, you know, the DOL does have investigatory powers. The DOL can do affirmative investigations as well as take complaints. The AG's office can speak more to that. But I think that once it became clear, very clear, that these were absolutely prohibited across the board, then it would not be that difficult to enforce, because there wouldn't be any sort of halfway or gray areas, right? It's a non-compete, it's not enforceable. The law as it is is really nothing but terror and gray areas.
I had a, you touched upon the economics a little bit. I'm wondering if you can expand on how non-competes can contribute to creating and/or validating strengthening monopolies or monopsonies?
So, a monopoly is a situation, and I think the NLP testimony, you know, talks about that as well, where the employer essentially completely controls the playing field. So I think in a really micro example, the example of the chiropractor, right, is an example where one chiropractor, her former employer, has essentially managed to control the playing field and create a monopoly in the town of Watertown, right? So that can happen on a micro scale. It can happen on a little bigger scale, like the chain of doggy daycares we were talking about, right, in one neighborhood. Or it can happen on a macro scale. I mean, certainly, some of the non-competes that I described from my practice were well-known nationwide entities who managed through their non-competes and the broad language in them and their aggressiveness to essentially set wages and control working conditions in the whole economy area in which they were placed.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And your daughter's always welcome in Queens, by the way. We have doggies too.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for your testimony, and thank you for your hard work on this issue.
Thank you.
We've been joined by Senator James Scoofus. Next witness is Jonathan Halpert.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Nice watch.
You're Dr. Jonathan Halpert?
I am.
Excellent, excellent. Thanks for coming today.
Absolutely. My wife warns me about speaking extemporaneously in public, so I actually wrote a few remarks down.
My staff warns me about that all the time.
Me too, but I ignore them.
It's better if I do it this way, for your sake, really. So I'll just take a few minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Ryan, and Ramis, and Scoofus, for inviting me to speak with you today. I greatly appreciate the opportunity. My name is Jonathan Halpert. I'm a physician. I graduated from Albany Medical College in 1998. I completed an emergency medicine residency at Albany Medical Center Hospital in 2001. I worked as an emergency physician at St. Peter's Hospital and Albany Memorial Hospital through 2007. I was an employed physician there in those places. And then transitioned into urgent care medicine, first as the employed urgent care medical director for the now-defunct Prime Care Physicians Group in Albany, then as the urgent care medical director for St. Peter's Health Partners after their merger. I left St. Peter's at the end of 2017 and founded Priority Medical Services, PLLC, opening Priority One Urgent Care at that time. I have continuously owned and operated Priority One as an independent small business located in Gilderlin, New York, just west of here, since its inception in April of 2019. And by the way, what a ride that's been, let me tell you. As a practicing physician and medical practice owner, I wholeheartedly support Senate Bill 3100 prohibiting non-compete clauses as they pertain to medical employment agreements, whether they be imposed by a hospital, a health system, a private equity company, or a private physician practice. My practice's physician recruitment advertising has since day one of our existence proudly promoted the fact that we do not have and will not include non-compete clauses in our employment agreements. Medical non-compete clauses are inherently unfair and are ultimately counterproductive, only serving to diminish access to a community's vital healthcare resources. And my heart goes out to the first speaker, because I understand exactly where she is coming from. And I only wish I could talk to folks in her position now, knowing what I know now from what I knew then. They are based in the misguided belief that a physician's book of business in some way belongs to entities other than the doctor, whose efforts are key to patient recruitment and retention, and that if a doctor were to leave a practice but remain within the same general area, would end up taking their patients with them. This is not an entirely incorrect assumption, but fails to take into account the employer's basic obligation to work to retain valued employees. The employer's overarching logic is that they have provided the physician the means to work, see patients, and earn income, all partially true, but those are fundamental to any employer-employee relationship. A physician should not be particularly penalized by virtue of their degree and license. Non-compete logic and tradition also fails to take into account that within so-called on-demand medical disciplines, like urgent care medicine, emergency medicine, and hospitalist medicine, all of which employ a substantial number of New York's physicians, there is no subscribed patient base comprising the book of business. So, what actual benefit is there in engaging a restrictive employment covenant when hiring a physician? Many states prohibit non-compete clauses in physician employment agreements. It's time New York joins the ranks of other more progressive states enacting legislation like S3100 to help turn New York from its historic place as one of the least physician-friendly places to work, encouraging more doctors to come into the state and dissuading those that are here from having to move out of New York in order to escape the archaic, unfair, and counterproductive prohibitions of their employment agreements. Thank you.
Been given the okay to start you off. Thank you for your testimony, Doctor. I'm curious, in your experience, how pervasive are these provisions in the medical space?
Incredibly pervasive.
Extremely?
Almost ubiquitous.
Is that right?
In New York, absolutely.
Okay. And are they more common, or are they equally as common, in the private practice space versus hospital-based?
I would say they're ubiquitous in the more larger organized organizations than they would be in private practice. But they are prevalent in private practice as well, because of the nature of the beast. People are brought up to believe that system. That's the way it's always been done. Therefore, they move in that direction almost with a herd mentality.
Got it. I'm sure you know, and most people know, you just have to look around your own community, the diminishing number of private practice offices that exist in New York, and I suspect we're not alone in the country, and it's probably common in most other states. Do you think that these non-compete clauses contribute to the diminishing number of private practices that are around New York?
I'm not sure you can make that assumption.
Okay.
That's a bit of a leap. It's a pretty complicated question with a pretty multifaceted answer to it in terms of that particular question. I don't think it helps, but I don't think that that's, you know, the larger answer to that question.
Fair enough. Thank you.
In terms of the impact of non-competes in, you know, your field, does it lead to doctors leaving the area? Where I live in Buffalo, we have two major hospital corporations. Those hospital corporations have family practice units, they have orthopedics, and I assume they both have non-competes to insulate doctors going from one to the next. But where is there to go then, if you are under one of these non-competes?
Oh, yeah.
Because the hospital systems become larger as Senator Scoofus alluded to.
Absolutely. It's conceivable to say, if you work for a large health system, okay, your non-compete might apply to you working in your Albany-based office, for example. But because they have properties in Utica, they have properties in Glens Falls, they have properties in Poughkeepsie, perhaps the interpretation of that non-compete would say, you can't work within 25 or 50 or 100-mile radius of any of those places. So guess what? You get to work in Canada. Well, maybe you can't work in Canada, practically speaking. So absolutely, and I can think of very concrete examples. One of the physicians who was until very recently working in my own practice, actually was a general surgeon, not an emergency physician or urgent care physician, but, you know, had a breadth of experience and understanding and awareness, who left their local practice and their non-compete was being enforced against them. Well, they now, they wanted to continue practicing surgery, their primary specialty. They're working now not too far from where the first speaker hails from, because that's the closest they could get to find that job and not violate the restrictive covenant.
What do you think the impacts are on health outcomes with these non-competes?
I think the impacts are a function of limiting access overall. You know, if I can't get people to come to my office to work, because, let's face it, I'm a small business, single site, I've got 12 employees, we're open seven days a week. We work pretty hard to make that happen, but we do it because, you know, we're true believers in the old school in terms of how that goes. We want to practice that kind of medicine. But to do that with people, you've got to have access to those folks. And many of these people, they'll show up and say, yeah, I want to do that, but I'm time-limited. I won't be with you for a year. Well, I can't do that. That's not practical. That creates a real vacuum, because there may be a day when I just can't open, because you know what? We don't have anybody in the schedule for that. It's not going to be good. And I think that that's true of all industries. I don't think it matters as far as, you know, medical non-competes per se. I think, you know, once you're limiting access like that, it's very counterproductive. It's not helping out, you know, what's our mission here? What's our goal? I get it, what our microeconomic goal was, we're a business, we want to earn, that kind of thing. But globally, we're a business to serve, to do our job, and if I sell healthcare for a living, I get that, but if I'm closed, no one's being helped. And I don't care how you want to frame it, in terms of the plus or negative of being in the healthcare commodity world. If we're not open, if we're not doing our job, we're not helping people who want our product, and they want it for generally very good reasons. So I think if we have these clauses in place, and it just restricts access to who can work, you know, it's bad for the whole community's healthcare. I don't care what community you're in. And I think that we have to really do, we have to extend ourselves to say, hey, listen, if I don't want you to leave, make it so that you don't leave. If you're not a great employee to begin with, okay, you can leave, go someplace else. It's difficult when you're young coming out. I remember being in the first speaker's shoes, you know. And I wasn't that young, actually. I was a 32-year-old freshman in medical school, so I wasn't that young when I got done with residency. I was about 39-years-old.
People in their 30s are still young.
Yeah, if I could remember my 30s, I would help you with that one. But, you know, you get out and you are geared up and ready to go. You want to do what you were trained to do. You are basically a weapon, ready to go to war against pestilence, disease, illness, and famine, you know, that's the kind of thing. And you also have debt, and, you know, the compensation you're being offered is great, you know, it looks terrific, you know, you're going to do that. But the devil is always in the details. I think, Senator Ramos, you mentioned, you know, you've got to have it read by somebody who understands how to read it. And you also have to have it read by somebody who might be willing to give you counsel that says, this is bad, don't do it, but you might risk not getting that job. You know, there's always the give and take. It's the negotiating system, you know. So are you willing to walk away and go to the other job? Do you have the wherewithal to maybe walk away like I did in 2017, cash in your retirement, basically, and set up a private practice, you know, going against the entire headwind, you know, of what's going on in healthcare right now? It's really difficult to comprehend that when you're first coming out. You just want to go to work, and you feel like, eh, that non-compete thing, that's years away, if at all, I'm going to love this job. Except, life gets in the way, and reality kind of bites, and things happen. So, you know, the bar has to be where, you have to be able to go in with both eyes open, you have to have good counsel, and you have to make a decision as well, you know, ultimately, what works for you or not.
That's a heck of a lot to put on an employee looking for a job.
Oh, yeah. No, I know. That's what I'm saying. If you have the means to get that counsel and listen to it and decide, but really, what you know when you're 25 or 30-years-old is way different from what you know than when you're 55 or 60-years-old, and you all know that.
Yeah, you know, based on what I know about just my geographic, the two big hospital corporations, they're not negotiating away.
No.
You're not competing. If you don't want to work there, if you don't want to sign that, you're not working there.
Right.
That doesn't put you...
Right.
You made another point, Doctor. You referenced somebody, well, you know, you're not a good employee, then we're okay with you leaving, but that non-compete still follows you.
Yeah, that was surprising to me. I actually hadn't heard that one. You know, the fact that, you know, if you're terminated, you know, with cause, where, you know, they say, okay, now you still can't compete. I don't understand how that one works. That was a bit of a surprise to me.
Yeah, and we also have received written testimony from people who are laid off.
Yeah.
And still can't...
It's mind-boggling.
Jobs, yeah.
Mind-boggling.
It just can't be good for the economy.
It's not good for anything.
I mean, I think we've been very thorough, but I guess I'm curious to know if you feel that people seek employment with you more than they would with someone or an entity where they would have to sign a non-compete?
I would like to believe that that's true, but my experience of the past few years has led me to believe that that's not necessarily picked up on. People just aren't necessarily that in tune with that. The only time it happens typically is when someone says, I'll get a phone call from, someone says, I just was, I'm leaving my practice in Latham, you know, can I work for you? And I say, sure, you can. Are you allowed to? And they say, ooh, I got to check that, you know, and they look and they say, you know, I looked at the, you know, my agreement, and there's a 20-mile exclusion. Well, my car, you know, it's 21 miles. As the crow flies, it's 19 miles. I say, well, I don't know what to tell you other than, you know, I don't have the wherewithal to contest your non-compete. You might. Depends what entity wrote the non-compete. Is it, you know, a small business person who also doesn't have the ability to actually enforce it or not? It depends. But many times, these folks are coming from the systems, and they're saying, yeah, I want to get out because I'm tired of the nonsense with the system, and I want to do what you did, you know? But they have to wait. Every once in a while, they do wait, which is great, but it's a challenge for all of us.
Have you ever had trouble filling a specific vacancy because of non-competes, meaning, you know, you needed a cardiologist on your team, and you just couldn't find one who could come and work for you?
Well, I'm not that specialized. But, yeah, I mean, it's funny how the employment cycles have been swinging, not funny, it's actually kind of devastating how they've been swinging for the past few years. You know, up until last fall, it was myself and one other doctor for probably a solid year, maybe 16 months, manning the entire schedule, real challenge. And several times, people approached us who ultimately couldn't take the job or wouldn't take the job because of their prior contract. Suddenly, I wouldn't say we're flush with employees, but we've got a couple of docs who are with us now, and so it's a lot easier. I can't explain why that's been. You know, I don't have any reason behind that, but, so it hasn't touched me as dramatically as it could, but for, you know, 2021, 2022 and a half, it was pretty bad, you know, it was, you know, that part. And there was a couple of instances when that did occur.
Can I ask, then, why you're so passionate in advocating against non-competes?
Great question, right. You'd think that I would be... Great question, right. You'd think that I would be one of the people who would want to.
It sounds like you're a decent employer, you you want your, you know, employees to to remain, you know, eligible for for other employment. Should should they choose to leave? Should you choose to terminate them?
Right.
You don't have to be here to testify for, you know, in favor of Senator Ryan's bill. Why are you?
You know, this just goes back to when I started, and and I and I spent a little time reading it and trying to wrap my brain around it. And and understanding, you know, it just, I am a, I'm a kind of a, you know, what goes around comes around, you know, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. I I believe in fair play, and I like free markets, and I'm I'm a little bit laissez-faire in my approach in this. And I think that we can build a better mousetrap by just respecting each other to some small degree. I don't have to, you know, I I I'm looking at this from the ten-thousand-foot view. Again, limiting limiting an employee's ability to work someplace else, if they don't want to be working with me, I'm good with that, you know?
That's such an interesting discussion, and and don't worry, I won't extend myself too much, but, you know, everybody loves capitalism until it stops working for them. I have this issue with street vendors and brick-and-mortar businesses over in my hood in Queens, where, you know, they constantly feel like they're in competition, where I am of the opinion that it's not the same thing, but I digress. Thank you for your testimony, Dr. Hopper.
Absolutely. My pleasure.
And I'll just leave you with a a a family story. My wife and daughters have a different family, medicine doctor than I do. And suddenly, their sort of doctor was off the list. They went to make an appointment, the doctor doesn't work here anymore. Oh, you know, where is she? We don't have any information. And we happened to run into her at the supermarket and said, hey, what what's going on? Did you stop practicing medicine? She's a young doctor. And the doctor said, no, I I had to move, I I left. But I'm out in a pretty rural area part, and they said, oh, I didn't know you, so you want to do rural medicine now? And the answer was, no, I have a non-compete where I have to be certain miles away.
Right.
So my wife and daughters, you know, switched. But it it quickly became apparent that they were accessing their healthcare less because they had to travel farther.
Oh, absolutely.
Every appointment became more difficult.
Right.
So they end up, you know, leaving that practice, not going back to the original practice. So if the idea was that, you know, the original practice group thought they want to be able to hold those clients or those patients, it didn't work for them either. They end up losing the the patients, but the.
It tends to generate a lot of animosity towards the practice, too. So not only, you know, will your family not stay with the system, you know, it was not with the with the the doctor who left, who they were with, they won't go back to that system necessarily and take up with a new practitioner. They'll, they'll probably, I don't know, spite or whatever, out of this infractionment, you know, seek to to engage with someone out of the system entirely.
That's exactly what happened.
Yeah.
Thanks a lot for your for your testimony. Thanks for doing what you do in the community.
My pleasure. Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
Warning. Next up is Najah Farley from National Employment Law Project. Thanks for coming today, Najah.
Thank you for having me. Thank you, Senator Ramos, and Senator Ryan, and the members of the Labor Committee and the Committee on Commerce, Economic Development, and Small Business. I'm Najah Farley, and I'm a senior staff attorney at NLP. And as many know, may know, NLP works on issues of employment policy. And we have been working on this issue and partnering with federal, state, and local lawmakers to promote workers' rights and labor standards enforcement. And also, I've test, given testimony in a number of states about how workers are unable to learn, earn a living when hampered by non-competes. So I'm here to testify today in support of S three thousand one hundred, which would significantly limit the use of non-compete covenants for employees in New York State. I first came to this issue when I was an assistant attorney general at the New York State Office of the Attorney General, and I know we'll be hearing from them later. And at that time, we worked on the Jimmy John's case investigation, where it was uncovered that Jimmy John's, the sandwich shop, was using non-competes with a number of sandwich makers who apparently had proprietary information in terms of like how they were making the sandwiches. And as a part of that, multiple usages of these agreements were uncovered across so many different industries, including phlebotomists, IT professionals, security guards, bike messengers, school cafeteria workers, amongst others. And since joining NLP, I have continued advocating against the proliferation of these agreements because I've seen firsthand their effect on workers. So non-competes are imposed by employers on employees as a condition of getting a job, but also when you receive a promotion. That's another key place where employees are given non-competes. And they bar the employer, employee from moving to a competing employer-related business. Sometimes they are bound by industry or geography, but some are very broad. I've seen some that implicated every major city in the United States, like, because it was a company that had branches in in all of, like, let's say, New York, LA, et cetera. So they were barred from all of those major cities working as a ri- for rival competitor companies. Research suggests that nearly one in five workers in the United States is currently bound by a non-compete. And employers stated reasons for using these are to protect trade secrets, screen for employees that intend to stay with the company and protect investment and employee trainings. However, you know, we find that these, this reasoning doesn't really stand up to scrutiny because we have a number of defensive trade secret acts and other laws that that keep workers from taking trade secrets to other places. Also, there's not really, I don't really see how it's a non-compete is going to screen for employees that intend to stay with the company when there isn't really that back-and-forth negotiation for like what the non-compete entails. And then I think that there have been some studies that show that there are employers that put more money into employee trainings when they have a non-compete, but there are other studies that show the opposite, that there really isn't so much of a difference. So, um, those don't really, I think, in the balance between workers and employers, those don't really balance out in their, in employer's favor. The non-compete provisions are usually presented by employers in a take-it-or-leave-it fashion. And what that means is that they don't, most workers do not have the power to change them or negotiate their implementation. They're forced to sign or forego the job opportunity or the promotion. Studies have shown that workers rarely negotiate the issue of non-competes. So of those who receive the non-compete before the job offer, ten percent bargained over the non-compete. And for these reasons, for those, that that reason is why we often refer to non-competes as coercive waivers, as they are not negotiated, and workers do not have the means to change the terms of the agreement. They just basically have to refuse to take the job or the promotion. So, and also, going back to the issue of trade secrets, many employers apply these agreements across all workers in their businesses, whether or not the workers actually have access to trade secrets. So because there have been studies that show that, like, just it, they'll, that these are just, have become like you talked about, Senator Ryan, it's something that's in all of the contracts, all of the employment materials for the whole organization oftentimes. Okay, so one other, another thing I wanted to make sure we get to is that the non-competes have an effect on workers' wa- wages. So this is because many workers get higher wages through moving from job to job. And so when you have workers who are not able to move from job to job, or you're in a state that strictly enforces non-competes, you find that there is a a decline in the dynamism in the U.S. labor market. So Economic Policy Institute has noted that because non-competes limit workers' ability to take other jobs to start their own businesses, it contributes to decline in dynamism. One study showed that in states where non-competes are more strictly enforced, non-competes reduce workers' options to move to new firms. And this reduction in labor market turnover or churn affects the overall job market. So this is how non-competes, a small, seemingly narrow agreement between an employer and employee, has an outsized effect on the overall economy. A key component of this legislation is the inclusion of the private right of action, which is important because of the information gap and power differential when it comes to these agreements. When employers present these agreements, many employees are not able to negotiate. And if they wanted to challenge the agreement after they leave, they have to wait for the employer to file a case, as Miriam discussed. There, there's very little way that most people would be able to afford to bring like a declaratory judgment action or something to say, like, this is not valid. So they have to wait for either getting a cease and desist order and go through the process of enforcement in a soft, like, I guess, we call it, well, I call it like a soft way of enforcement, where they'll send a cease and desist to the employee or the employer's, employee's new job, and then have a negotiation from there. And so a private right of action is going to change this balance of power and make it easier for workers to challenge the imposition of a non-compete on their, on its face. I also wanted to make sure I get to the part about, oh, let me go back, and I also hope that, you know, as a part of this, as since this will be in the New York labor law, that the Attorney General's office would be able to bring public enforcement actions against employers who violate under sixty-three twelve. Hopefully, I'm not sure exactly how everything would work, but hopefully that would also include them in the public enforcement of this bill, if it becomes law. So in our recent comments to the FTC, we discussed the history of non-competes and how their modern-day usage. Some legal historians have traced it back to contracts forced on newly freed, formerly enslaved people. And that is also part of like how, I think this his, that history also, it shows how these non-competes continue to affect workers of color and women in a more, in 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 a different way. So researchers have found that non-competes can have a detrimental impact on people of color because it gives businesses more power to discriminate. So for example, like, if you're a worker who, you know, was subject to some type of racial discrimination or harassment at work, and you also have a non-compete, then you have that situation where that person may be unable to move to another place, still subject to this type of harassment or discrimination. Or it gives them more power to be able to say, if they're going to want to enforce the agreement against that person. So because employers have the right, have the ability with this situation where employees can't challenge them on their face to decide who they're going to take to court. And also, there's been showing that women who are less likely to negotiate, and workers of color are less likely to negotiate, and their earnings are reduced by twice as much when they are in states with strict non-compete enforcement. And they're also less likely to start rival small businesses. So I think that I'm close to my time, but I'd also like to say that a study in twenty twenty-one showed that the two thousand eight Oregon non-compete law increased hourly wages by two to three percent on average. So this bill, if passed, would likely have a larger effect on wages because it would be an even stricter non-compete law than the Oregon non-compete law that passed. And all of these changes have leveled the playing, playing field for workers.
Thank you.
I talked really fast, I know.
You did great. Yes, thank you so much for being here. I'm wondering, you know, of course, people of color so often get the short end of the stick when we're talking about employment. And I'm wondering what the correlation, if any, is between these non-compete agreements and the ability to whistleblow dangerous working conditions or to organize a union?
Yeah, I'm sure, I mean, like, they, the issue is like, if you have a non-compete and you are basically not going to be able to continue to work in your field, what is the incentive for you to go forward and do something like that? You know, like, you're going to end up possibly being, for lack of a better word, like, blackballed from other company, similar companies. You're going to end up in a situation where you're not able to continue working in your field more than likely. Because if they find, if people in the field find out, okay, like, you are whistleblowing, and you also were bound by this non-compete, you're violating a lot of the norms around businesses and how employees are supposed to act, which is not to, you know, speak back or not to, you know, fight back against like these types of things.
Would you say, then, that these non-compete agreements have impeded improvements to certain industries? In raising standards?
Well, I don't know if I would say it's impeded improvements, but I think like, they, they're a part of a whole of agreements that work to sort of stop workers from coming forward. So we have like non-competes, forced arbitration agreements, and also non-solicitation agreements. So there have been studies that show that the imposition of the forced arbitration agreements is a part of how all of these employment contracts started to be given to people. And so when someone is bound by all of these agreements at the same time, they're often used together, you are not going to be able to go to court if you have racial discrimination. You're not going to be able to get another job if you have a non-compete. You're not going to be able to go and if you have a small business or some, or you want to start a small business or something like that, you're going to be subject to non-solicitation agreement. So your, people are put in a box, basically. Like, if they are in an industry, so many industries use these, like, they are not able to move forward with their career. And that's like a big piece of the job-hopping situation. If you're, you can't go from job to job, a lot of times, like, wages are not going up. And that's how the employers get that outsized control over the market. If they're all using these agreements, they're all sort of stopping people from going from job to job and able to keep the wages at a lower level.
And overall protects, well, bad employers.
Yeah.
Who may be bigots.
Yeah, or, and also just don't want to pay.
Right.
People appropriately.
You got a lot of that in construction. Stay tuned for wage theft on Thursday.
I mean, it's just like, one of those things that I've always wondered is, like, why is it that they just don't want to pay people more to keep them?
Sure, because they're grading, you know? Last question. So there are five states in Washington, D.C., that have already eliminated non-competes. And I'm, can you speak a little bit to the impact that has had in 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 those economies that we're, we might need, be in need of?
Well, I think, I mean, I, I don't have a lot of research on all of the economies, but I know, like, with, like I said, with Oregon, like, the law, the law has had an increase in in hourly wages because that non-compete law that was passed in two thousand eight only affected workers in in the minimum wage category. So basically, barred non-competes for only those workers. And it has such a large impact, and wages going up two to three percent. So, and currently, like, their non-compete law has a salary threshold of a hundred thousand dollars, but we don't know, you know, there haven't been any studies done on like how that works. And of course, I think that the three states that have banned non-competes have, California, Oklahoma, and North Dakota have had complete bans on the enforceability of non-competes since the eighteen hundreds.
Sorry, we're heckling California.
Yeah.
Jealous.
And so like, you know, and I think, like, even California had issues, right? Because employers were still giving non-competes to workers in California, even though they've been banned since eighteen seventy-two. So they had to pass another law, basically allowing people to, to, because they were unin, considered unenforceable, right? But how do you, again, like, how do you bring a private right of action if it's just unenforceable? Like, you have to wait for somebody to.
Does California have a private right of action?
Well, they had, they passed another law to say that you basically can't give anybody a non-compete at all. They had, they had. Yeah, they had to, that was recent, that was more recent. I don't have the date, but yeah, that was a recent law that was passed, I think, twenty nineteen, because there was such a proliferation of employers giving people non-competes in California, even though they were unenforceable there.
But it sort of goes to Miriam's point of, well, you're, it might be enforceable, it might not be enforceable.
Yeah.
But the chilling effect. But the chilling effect.
Yeah, that's exactly it.
It's, it might not matter if it's enforceable because the chilling effect is so profound.
Yeah, and that's the thing also about when you guys discussed workers who have been fired or laid off. Because there is some case law that may go, that may go the other way in New York, but it's like, who's going to take the gamble to see, like if the judge is going to follow that case law or this other case law?
So we're going to lose Senator Ramos in a minute, but before we lose her, I want to thank her for, you know, participating and co-hosting this hearing.
Fascinating stuff.
Thank you, thank you.
We'll have to keep working together, Senator Ryan.
Yes, so the last question I want to ask you, Najja, is that, you know, my experience and what I've read studies about how low wage workers get their wages higher, they usually don't get rewarded by their employers at places like Jimmy John's.
Yeah.
To say, you've done a great job, our individual assessment's going to give you a raise.
No.
People in those sectors usually make money by, by job hopping.
Yeah.
That they heard another place is paying more. Their friend tells them, oh, I left here, they paid two bucks more. They have a better schedule. So people hop, and that's how we're able to get some of the wages at the, at the bottom to come up. But these noncompete, especially with the larger chains, that has that chilling effect. If they start honoring each other's noncompete.
Yeah.
Then where are you going to go?
Yeah, it's a very big problem. And that's how I think, I mean, I wouldn't go so far as to say it is the cause, but I think like this is, it's one of the main, one of the issues that comes up when we talk about like, why is there a wage gap? Like, why are these things happening? Because, you know, I'm not saying it is the only cause, but I believe like these agreements are part of the constellation of things that's contributing because people are afraid.
Yes, and even from a non-wage perspective, if you're, can get a, a different position closer to your home, that works for your kid's school schedule, can't take it.
No, you're right.
That's, that's bad. Well, thanks for your time and your research and for the good work that National Law Employment Law Project NLP does. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
The Office of the Attorney General.
Good afternoon. My name is Karen Kukase, and I'm the Labor Bureau Chief for the New York State Office of the Attorney General. I've been in that position for over three years. Prior to joining the Attorney General's Office, I was the Director of the Employment Law Unit at the Legal Aid Society in New York City. I want, at the outset, I want to note that Attorney General James and the rest of our office continue to appreciate the strong and constructive relationship we have with the legislature. We offer our time and any relevant expertise we may have to work on any other legislative proposals.
That's great, and I'll say right back, we appreciate the Attorney General's interest in this area and many of the interests that she has around, around labor in general. So thank you so much for being here, and thank you to Attorney General James for allowing you to be available.
Thank you. And I want to thank you for convening this important hearing and for giving our office an opportunity to share our thoughts on the impact of noncompete provisions on labor market and economic development and, and possible solutions, including your bill. Our office routinely receives complaints from workers subject to noncompete provisions who have serious concerns, including from workers who are being sued by a former employer, from workers whose prior employer are threatening to sue them, from workers who find out after they've been begun working that they unknowingly signed an agreement that includes a noncompete provision, and from workers who are about to start a job and believe that the noncompete provision that the employer is requiring them to sign is overbroad. For most of these workers, as we have heard in earlier testimony, the noncompete provision was not presented as a negotiable term. It was presented as a requirement to keep or continue their employment or as part of a first day pile of paperwork. And even if those workers were able to ascertain that they are required, they are being required to agree to a noncompete provision, most of them could not afford an attorney to represent them and attempt to negotiate the terms of the provision. The businesses about which workers complain about imposing onerous noncompete provisions are varying types and sizes, including temp agencies, janitorial services, banks, media companies, fitness companies, telecommunications companies, home health aid agencies, retailers, data, data analytics companies, pest control companies, legal translations, translation services, healthcare providers, and hotel operators. Our office has investigated and settled noncompete issues at various companies, including the legal news website Law 360, Jimmy John's Gourmet Sandwiches, Examination Management Services, a nationwide medical information services provider, and WeWork, the shared office-based provider. We have also investigated and settled noncompete issues with smaller companies, such as payment processing, a payment processing firm, and a healthcare staffing, staffing agency that prevented its temporary and travel medical professionals from working at any competitor of its client facilities, including hospitals and nursing homes. As you noted, historically, noncompete provisions were used sparingly for executives with trade secrets or confidential business information, and these executives were typically represented by lawyers who negotiated the terms of the agreement with the employer. However, it has become increasingly common for employees, even in low wage jobs, to be subject to noncompete provisions, often with little or no negotiation allowed. An ever-growing number of these agreements bear no relation to their historic purpose. Noncompete provisions are not necessary to protect trade secrets or proprietary information. Confidentiality agreements can address these issues. As you also noted, New York is behind other states in enacting legislation restricting noncompete provisions. This year, Minnesota will join California, Oklahoma, and North Dakota in completely banning noncompete provisions. Maryland and Kentucky have both enacted legislation this year awaiting their governor's signatures, which will add restrictions on employers imposing, imposing noncompete. And many other states recognizing the effects of noncompete on workers, especially low wage workers, have enacted legislation restricting noncompete in recent years. The Federal Trade Commission's proposed rule banning noncompete is a welcome development. Our office recently joined with the Attorney Generals of 16 states in the District of Columbia to file support for the Commission's proposed rule. However, because it is not possible to determine when the FTC's proposed rule will take effect, it is important that the state legislature enact legislation prohibiting noncompete provisions. We therefore urge the New York State Legislature to enact noncompete legislation and finally, end the proliferation of these abusive provisions in New York. Your proposed noncompete legislation creates a uniform standard for all New York workers and businesses and reflects New York's priorities in protecting workers, wage growth, and economic development. The legislation also addresses companies' concerns regarding the protection of trade secrets and solicitation of clients. We do, however, have some suggestions which we believe strengthen the protections and provide important clarifications to workers and businesses. First, the bill should clarify that noncompete provisions currently in effect are null and void and require that employers notify their workers that any current noncompete, noncompete then in effect is void. We believe that voiding noncompete currently in place is necessary to alleviate the problems this legislation is meant to address and provide all workers in New York certainty and the uniform protection of the law. And particularly, you know, as we heard from the first witness, somebody who has a, an existing noncompete, we want to make sure that that is, is void. And so would, would provide a remedy to people in her situation. Secondly, the bill should require that employers notify all workers in writing or by posting in a place customarily frequented by employees that noncompete provisions are prohibited by law. It is important to inform workers of their rights, and it's consistent with other laws that require employers to provide workers notice of employment protections.
But to go to the notice, if you don't mind me interrupting you.
Yeah, of course.
Karen, is, is that because of the situation we saw in California? Where even though they were banned?
Exactly.
They still had the same impact?
Right, so even if, you know, even if we pass a law that says you can't do this, it's not actually going to prevent all employers from doing that. And so if the workers see a sign, if they get a notice when they're first hired, I think it will have some deterrent effect on employers because it seems odd to be handing an employee a piece of paper that says noncompete are, are void and also give them one. But even if that situation occurred, the employee could read that and say like, this doesn't look right to me. And then be able to confront the employer directly or go to a lawyer who then has a very clear case, right? Not as Miriam said, you know, now it's so confusing, you can't even tell whether the, the noncompete would be upheld. But once the bill is passed, it's definitely void. An easy call to the employer to say, you got to take that out.
And then it also might help employers become informed.
Absolutely.
Because I have a feeling a lot of employers have no idea when the law is changed.
Yep.
So the proposal here is this would go on the notice board near the overtime rules, near the break rules, near the minimum wage rules, near the I want not discriminate rules.
Yep, exactly.
Pretty simple solution to something that could be quite complex.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, please continue.
Sure. The third suggestion was to clarify the definitions of, of individual employer and employment just to make sure that it's clear that it covers all workers in New York. And that's because, as you know, we have a large misclassification of employees, problem in the state. And, and sometimes employers want to classify workers as independent contractors and also put in a noncompete. And so it is, this would just make it clear that whatever you were, you were trying to classify your workers rightly or wrongly, you still are not allowed to have a noncompete for them.
Okay.
A fourth, we think the bill should prohibit workers from waiving application of the law. And that is similar to FLSA requirement. You can't, you know, even, even if the employer cannot make the argument, well, they, they wanted to anyway, they can negotiate their way out of this. It's just, this is the law, there's no noncompete, and you can't, you can't have a negotiation around that. And I think as Miriam mentioned, prohibit the, the contract from having a choice of law provision that says, well, we're going to, the choice of law for this contract is a different state that allows noncompete. You're not going to be able to contract out of it. I think Miriam also mentioned a prohibition against TRAPs, the Training Repayment Agreement provisions. And these are something that our office has seen. In many instances, a worker will call us and say, we, you know, I have this contract that says that I, if I leave before a certain period of time, then I have to repay back training costs. And you are going to hear shortly from one of the workers who called our office, who was a tattoo apprentice, artist apprentice, and was billed $15,000 for leaving her contract before the two-year provision. So it's, it's really something that obviously chills people's ability to leave their jobs and, and get a new and better job. And, and is appropriate and is, and works the same way as noncompete, so we think should be included in the bill. And finally, the, the, the last suggestion is to include specific enforcement provisions for the Attorney General's Office and for the Department of Labor, and to make the fee shifting provision mandatory if, if private counsel is, is bringing the case. And that is because we just want to make sure that there's robust enforcement of this.
And then without that, the ability of the Department of Labor or the AG to come in, no employer, employee probably working at Jimmy John's has the disposable income available to hire a lawyer.
Exactly, and so we want to make sure that government has, has the power to enforce and...
There's great nonprofit programs who help to provide legal services, but we all know that the civil legal services of New Yorkers are broadly unmet.
Yes, exactly.
We don't want it so that they can't, essentially the law won't apply to them because they can't afford to assert their rights.
Yes, exactly.
And then what would that, that provision you're recommending, what would the AG or the DOL be able to do if that provision?
To just enforce all the provisions of the law. So our office can conduct investigations and bring litigation if necessary to, to enforce provisions of the labor law. This would clarify and just explicitly say that for us and for the Department of Labor, people would be able to file claims with the Department of Labor, and it would become one of the issues that they are able to investigate and, and resolve.
So you pull it out of just the private right of action?
Yeah, just add on.
And then that would mean if someone's under one of these, they could go to their local AG office and said, I have this problem.
Yes.
And if you can choose to, you know, to pursue that.
Exactly.
But without this, you probably, you might or might not be charged.
So our, our office has authority under Executive Law 6312 to involve, to investigate and litigate any repeated or persistent violations of law. So it could be that somebody would come to us and we would say, oh, well, this noncompete applies to several people in this office, and so we think that under our 6312 authority, we could go ahead and investigate. But I, it's, it's, it's a, removes an issue if it says specifically in the statute. Also, the AG can enforce this and can obtain any of the penalties that are, that are available in the, in the law.
You also made a suggestion, suggestion about retroactivity.
Yes.
You were sort of a little bit adverse to making things, you know, retroactive. You know, tell, tell me a little bit why we should in this instance.
Yes, right, I, I think that, you know, that it's, that is not common for bills to be retroactive. But in this particular instance, it really does make sense and I think is perfectly permissible. Because the real employment contract is for the employee to do the work that the employer wants them to do. So that's the, that's the essence of the employment contract. And we are not, by making this noncompete provision void, we're not impacting that part, that, you know, the, the most essential part of the relationship. But we are taking out something that is, is really unfair to the employee, is inappropriate. And so because the legislature has a rational basis for wanting to remove this provision, I think it's perfectly permissible to do so. And it absolutely is necessary to avoid confusion because if it only applies prospectively, then you will have everyone, as, as Miriam said, from 1996 up, you know, up onwards, who signed one in all these past decades may still be in effect. Does that mean they're subject to the common law interpretation of their noncompete while people going forward, it's totally void? It would just be very difficult and confusing to enforce if it's not retroactive.
So really allow for the uniform application? And that would stop odd situations where, you know, some chain workers might be under a noncompete. Their coworker could go to the chain down the street and make more money, but the other person might still be bound and maybe not be hired because, because of that.
Right, and it would avoid a situation where if this law doesn't go into effect for 30 days, everybody has a, an incentive to get employees to sign these so they will, they will be valid, where, you know, after 30 days, they wouldn't be valid.
And it's a sort of a broad question, but is there a place for noncompete?
I don't think that there needs, that there needs to be, right? You, your bill takes out confidentiality agreements and it, and it takes out nonsolicitation agreements. And that's what employers really are most concerned about. That if they actually do have proprietary information, that that is not taken and used to start a competing business. And that's still very protected. And so everything else is just employees looking for better jobs. And that's, that's what we should all want, right? We want employees to be able to find good jobs. We want the employers that are offering good jobs to be able to hire people and not, as, as the doctor who was running his business testified, not be able to find people because they're subject to noncompete. The more freedom employees have to look for work and employers have to hire them, the better services that will be available to the public.
It seems anytime someone engages in a deep conversation about these employment contracts and noncompete, the first thing they go to is trade secrets.
Right, and it's, you know...
And stealing book of business and not, they really conflate the two.
Yes, I think that's right.
Or maybe the three things with the proprietary. But those are, those will have, and have clear protection under New York state law, even with this bill.
Yes.
So the ability to employer to assert their rights regarding trade secrets and proprietary information, that all stays.
Exactly.
So if you're a big tech company and you think you need to use the noncompete to protect proprietary information, you shouldn't fear this.
No, and of course, as, as, you know, has been noted earlier, California has banned noncompete for, you know, fully banned them for, you know, very, very long time. And obviously, the tech industry has flourished there. So it's not a, it's not an issue that, that any tech company should worry about.
Hasn't seemed to impede their innovation economy.
No.
Well, that's great. Thanks for your continued work on this, and we look forward to making this a better bill.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Yeah, we really appreciate it. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, once again. I am Prabhu Sagamani, a Director of Restaurant Opportunities Center of New York. It is my honor to be before you on behalf of all the restaurant workers that we serve and testify in support of Senate Bill S 3100. Noncompete agreement in the restaurant industry poses significant threat to workers, mobility, hinder entrepreneurship, and prevent workers from earning higher wages. Noncompete agreement has become more popular for low wage positions, like many in the food preparation... preparation and service industry. In 2020, there were nearly 281 tipped workers across New York State who earned minimum wage or lesser than the minimum wage. While this is true, nearly 14% of the industry lives in poverty. 160,000 of the tipped workers are servers, 61% of these are women. Parents account for 31% of the restaurant industry, while 33% of the industry's servers are mothers, with half being single parent. Unfortunately, the non-compete clause are often buried in the fine print of employment contracts and pile of papers and applications. In many cases, these are not highlighted nor flagged by the employers. Many workers do not even recall signing a non-compete agreement until an employer attempts to enforce this particular clause. SBS 3100 will bolster food preparation and service workers' ability to make good living and advance their careers with more autonomy. This bill will narrow racial and gender-based wage gaps and promoting work mobility and increased income. Outside of the food industry chain, employers' non-compete also impact chefs, white-collar food service managers, food safety and science specialists. Workers are more across in the industry. Bound by the non-compete, these workers cannot create jobs, innovate, or meaningfully compete with existing players to move the industry forward. Recent studies have also found that non-compete agreements systematically drive down wages, even for workers they do not find. Non-compete clause in the food preparation and service industry imposes significant burden and harms the workers who would otherwise seek gainful employment that better serves their needs and talents, or who would start their own businesses. Restaurant Opportunities Center of New York strongly supports Bill SBS 3100 and will continue to raise the awareness for the restaurant workers so that they know of the harm of the non-competency clause.
Thank you, thank you very much, Prabhu.
Thank you.
Tell me a little bit about the Restaurant Opportunities Center.
The Restaurant Opportunities Center serves around 15,000 members in New York City. It was founded after 2001, when Windows on the World was one of the restaurant on the towers. And we do advocacy work, and we also do workforce development, where in the workforce development, we do have political and leadership education classes. That's where we discuss about all these issues with the workers. Many of the workers who sign these clauses, they don't even know that they signed it until it comes into effect.
And are you seeing an increase in the use of these clauses, you know, during your career doing this type of work?
No, we educate on political and policy issues such like these clauses to the employers.
Right. But are you seeing other employers using these employment contracts or the non-competes more often?
Yes, they do. But the employee who is signing in, who's desperate for their job, especially the post-pandemic when jobs were falling and they wanted to get a job, they don't even know that they are signing this particular paperwork, and they just sign it and get a job.
And what, what becomes the burden then on the employee who sort of backs into one of these agreements without knowing it?
They are not allowed, they are not able to go for a different job. Sometimes after a number of years in service, some of our members would like to open up their own businesses, and that would prevent them from opening up their own business, because this was a grade-two sommelier who knows about wine, or a butcher who has been worked for 10 years in butchering. Finally, he is not, he or she is not getting paid well, and they like to open up their own business. They would not be allowed to do it.
Can't think of anything more sort of what we would call un-American, this idea of be able to take your labor where you want it to go, to take your innovation, and to do what you want with it. To be, to be hamstrung by a contract...
That is right.
And have that be a valid public policy, it sort of boggles my mind.
The restaurant industry is the economic generating engine. No matter what happens, the restaurant doors need to be open. Everybody has to eat food. But it is one of the industry that faces the highest level of abuse too.
And the restaurant industry also needs turnover, right?
Needs turnover, yes.
So if you have, if everyone's, if people are, if employers in that industry are trying to enforce this, they're kind of cutting off their nose...
Yes.
Despite their face.
Definitely.
Because they think they might be able to retain people, but it makes it hard for them to hire people that want a new experience or are disgruntled.
That's very true.
And how do you, when people are going through this, like, you know, do you counsel people?
We do refer them for legal services. We do counsel people during our orientation and leadership classes, so that they go, they don't get tied up into this type of situations. Those are the ways that we support our membership.
And do you think the non-competes are bad for the restaurant industry as a whole?
I don't think so. I think the labor force should have the freedom to move along and use their skillset, and they should not be tied to one particular place. And most of the restaurant industry workers suffer twice. And every single discrimination that you can name, you can find it in the restaurant industry. And if a server, we often see server as just a person who serves food, but a server plays a dual role as a salesperson as well. That particular individual can boost the sale for the employer, but get less paid. And if the person decides to go to another restaurant, he or she would not be able to go because they signed this paperwork without their knowledge during the time of employment.
What do you think the best tools are for keeping somebody at their workplace?
Good labor practices, transparency. A person should know what they are getting into before they are hired.
And that's what we should be striving towards.
Exactly.
As opposed to, you know, contracts that bind you...
Exactly.
Or economically harm you if you, if you, if you break the contract.
It's very true. One of the examples that I can give is there are restaurants that pays $20 and plus, more than $20 right now, that's above the minimum wage. And we would see the employee retention in such restaurants greater because the employer is good to the employee, and they have the job satisfaction, and they have the freedom to go, but they don't go because they, they are part of that business. It's part of their family. So they try to stick on, and as long as they stick on to one particular industry, definitely they boost the sale because they have regular customers. So it is all tied up together.
So good labor practices...
Good labor practices.
Are good for your business.
Definitely.
And they're good for the economy.
Imagine if a restaurant has a chef who is transitioning every 15 days. Their food is going to taste different every 15 days.
Right.
And same goes with a server. If I go to a restaurant and I know the server very well, I don't have to give my special request every time I go. They see my face, and they give me special request, and I'm treated well. So businesses thrive when there are good labor practices in the restaurant industry.
And when you opened, you gave some data about people who work in the industry. Could you go over some of those points again for me?
In 2020, we did the restaurant, the state of the restaurant report. 280, 81, 720 tipped workers across New York State who earned the wages $8.35 per hour or, depending upon the region.
Right.
And 61% are servers and are women. And parents accounting to 30%, 31% of the restaurant industry, while 33% of the industry's servers are mothers, with half being single parent.
Right, so these non-competes could really have an impact...
Definitely.
On the folks who could really least afford to have these restrictions. That's great. Well, thank you for your testimony today. Thanks for coming up, and thanks for the good work that you do.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Good afternoon.
Hi.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair Sean Ryan. Thank you for giving us this opportunity. My name is Mahir Nassar. I'm the principal attorney of the Nassar Law Group. I'm an employment law firm in New York City. Passing the ban on non-compete agreements and clauses is essential to serve the public interest. My client, Melanie Lee, and millions of other New Yorkers strive to make a living by spending the majority of their time working for businesses. The power dynamic is clear. Employers have the upper hand, and ill-equipped employees are vulnerable to exploitation and abuse. To many employees are placed in a vulnerable position when being offered employment to have to agree to terms that limit their future employment. Oftentimes, these non-compete agreements are simply unenforceable, but it creates a burden for an employee to seek a declaration by the court that it is illegal and places the employer in a powerful position to bully an employee. I have witnessed employers use non-compete clauses as means to harass, retaliate, and abuse employees by hiring corporate attorneys who will threaten lawsuits. For an employee who is now moving on to a potentially new job, they are placed in a precarious situation. On one hand, the new employer may not want to be involved in any threatened litigation, and the former employer is now attempting to limit that employee's employment altogether. Most employees do not have the ability to afford the legal fees associated with defending, threatening lawyer letters from employers, which could run well into tens of thousands of dollars. Corporations have an interest in protecting confidentiality and trade secrets, but they do not have the right to limit a human being's ability to gain lawful employment. Non-competes cater to abuse and exploitation because they limit a person's ability to leave their current employer and cater to a deterrent in finding new employment elsewhere. Most employees who want to leave because of a toxic or abusive work environment, or because of a failure to promote or pair fairly, will be stuck just because they believe that they don't have an option. Today, we have a unique scenario where an employer uses its position of power to take advantage of a vulnerable employee by limiting their ability to leave. This employer not only failed to legally pay my client what she was legally owed, but also placed upon her the allegedly illegal obligation to pay the employer $15,000 if she wanted to leave because they trained her. They want to charge her for leaving because they trained her. That is wrong. And any employer who thinks that they can exploit and abuse the great people of New York should be aware that public servants of this great state will not sit idly. Passing this ban is about protecting the public interest and protecting employees against powerful employers. I want to ask Melanie Lee to share her story and how the non-compete impacted her. Thank you for your time and efforts in this matter.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, good afternoon. My name is Melanie.
Thank you for taking the time to come up. I know it's, we all have schedules and busy, but I really appreciate that, you know, you were able, you know, to do this and to be involved in this way.
Right, yeah, of course, I wanted to be here. So like many people, the pandemic forced me to reconsider my passions and my values. I was unhappy in my career as a fashion designer, and I just wanted some flexibility in my life. So I gathered my portfolio, and with no connections or experience in this industry, I cold emailed multiple tattoo studios in New York City. In November 2020, I was offered a position at Studio X. My duties were to open and close the shop, assist other artists during the day, in exchange for having a place to practice tattooing on fake skin, unpaid. Once I was ready to work with clients, the shop would take 50% commission of each tattoo, and eventually, when I had more experience, 40% commission. About two months later, I was presented with a non-compete contract for the first time. I was told that if I did not sign, I would have to leave the shop. The contract stated that I must remain at the shop for two years after signing. If I left prior to those two years, I would owe the shop $15,000 in liquidated damages. Additionally, I was not allowed to work within a 20-mile radius of the shop for the next two years after my departure, whenever that may be. At this point, I'd started learning the basics of tattooing. I could feel my confidence growing in this new craft, and I was really excited by the possibilities. Afraid of losing this opportunity, I signed the contract. Tattooing quickly became one of the most fulfilling parts of my life. I quit my corporate job and successfully made the switch into being a full-time artist. Unfortunately, I also realized that Studio X was not a safe workplace. And I want to emphasize again that the contract made it clear whether I worked there for two years or 20 years, and if moving on from the studio would result in a penalty. So after careful consideration, I quit in March 2022, a little over one year later. An invoice for $15,000 quickly followed, along with threats of legal action if I did not cease tattooing immediately. It claims that despite taking advantage of my free labor, taking 50% of almost every paycheck, and despite me providing many of my own supplies, I owed Studio X $15,000 in incurred damages. I've yet to see an itemized list that explains these charges. The contract is also aggressively territorial of clients I attracted with my own art. While a client can choose to work with me, they can also choose to work with anyone at Studio X or any artist in New York City. I have not and cannot coerce anyone to work with me over someone else. In enforcing this contract, my only options are to leave this industry that I love, or to leave New York City, a place I've called home for the past 11 years. In enforcing this contract, my livelihood is being held hostage. I started tattooing again in an entirely different borough, away from where I debuted, away from my professional network, just hoping to bounce back. And this journey is still ongoing. Since I began my career two years ago as a tattoo artist, all I've wanted to do is support myself with art. The financial cost and mental toll I've paid to fight this contract has driven me to desperation and burnout. This non-compete contract does not serve as protection for their business, but rather to entrap their employees and as a method of workplace retaliation. I'm here today on behalf of all workers for protection and prevention from predatory business practices, and so others never have to go through what I'm going through. Thank you.
Well, thank you, you know, again for sharing your journey and Mahir, great job being an employment lawyer. It is, it is hard, it is hard work, often the deck is stacked, stacked against us. But let me touch a little bit on, like, the two things that stand out to me is that, you know, after working for a year, you say, I want to move along to another job, is just a freedom we have as workers in America. But then you were presented with a $15,000 bill.
Yes.
Just a general, no specific breakdown of why you owed this money? Why do you think they wanted to charge you that money? They want to keep you?
I think so. I think they included it in the contract to just scare anyone from even think about, to even think about leaving. And then they sent that as punishment, I believe, for leaving.
But there's no reciprocalness of during your time there that they guarantee you a set amount of hours, a set amount of income?
No.
So if business flagged off, and you didn't like it there, no matter what, from their eyes, you would pay them $15,000 for the privilege of leaving a bad job?
Yes.
Incredible. And then what was the geographic limitation placed on you?
It was a 20-mile radius from the shop, which was located in Queens. I work now in Brooklyn, which is about as far as I could go, you know, based on what is available and, you know, and that's about 15 miles away, I believe. So, I mean, I tried to get as far away as possible within my personal limitations, so...
But you tried to get as far away as possible because you were afraid of enforcing it against you?
Yes.
Further punishing you or really not allowing you to work?
Yes.
If you took a 20-mile map and put it around where your old shop was, how far does that go?
Pretty far. It covers, I believe, almost every borough. I think I, I think the furthest I could go, you know, safely, legally, within this contract would be Staten Island. So, and that's a really difficult commute. You know, you'd have to take a ferry and a bus, you know, yeah.
Right, so, well, 20 miles might not appear shocking. Once you put it on a map...
Right.
It's essentially four out of the five boroughs...
Right.
Probably parts of Long Island that you're unable to work at.
Right. Right.
Which just makes it so you can't work.
Right, yes.
And the, and in return, you didn't get any guarantees from that company. No bonuses, no set dollar amount, no stock options.
No.
Right, so, you know, once again, I think people, when they hear about these non-competes, they think of Google executives.
Right.
But if you hear today, it's more likely to be artisans, people who work in healthcare
Right.
people who work in fast food.
Right.
But it, but it's made it so that you can't just go into the economy and do your thing.
Yes.
And now, do you see this much in your practice?
I do. Unfortunately, I see it way too often. And what I do notice is, is that employers take advantage of employees where employees reaching out to attorneys would already seem so costly, just in their mind, the general thought process that to speak to a lawyer would just be so unaffordable that to even make a phone call is just daunting of a task. So I think that the the major issue that comes in is that we don't even know how many people are not working where they want to work because they have come to this belief that their non-compete is enforceable and that there's nothing they can do. That's a reality that I've seen way too often and it's, it's horrible for any environment to know that you, your employment is restricted. So another thing is that not only is it a deterrent, but it also in some extents caters to exploitation because
How so?
Well, by by the mere fact that employees are stuck in environments where they're not only being treated unfairly, potentially abused, bullied, discriminated against. And when they have these non-compete clauses, they have a very difficult way of getting out. Now, I know that before, there were some people that were talking about the idea that when they are terminated, let's say without cause, in that context, nobody really knows the legal precedents within the court system, but to some extent, you know, the courts have already rendered opinions that that would not be enforceable. But for a layperson, an employee that is out to make a living, they're not going to have that legal precedence to really know how to operate. And they already have this burden of not only having to pay their bills, losing a job, but now also being limited in being able to find a job within their skillset. So as much as employees are in a vulnerable state under the current system, placing a non-compete on them on top of it eliminates their ability to even move freely. So it only allows that employer to continue to take advantage of those employees that don't see anywhere else to go. They're kept at the same pay, the disparities remain, they experience any form of mistreatment that they undergo, they develop mental health issues, which we've, which we're seeing at a high level right now in this country, especially with people as a result of the work force. The Attorney General, the State for Health has mentioned this before as the toxic workplaces have become stagnant all over the place. So this is an issue that I think really does cater to exploitation and abuse.
One of the earlier people testified, Najah Farley, talked about these provisions almost seeming like the provisions that were enacted after the Civil War with indentured servitude.
Yes.
It really prevented somebody with the skillset from getting a job that paid more in the same field.
Yeah.
So, so, you know, you you're, you're stuck. And how do you, in your experience as a lawyer, how do other potential employers react when they find out someone they're trying to hire has one of these contracts?
So anytime anybody comes to me with having a non-compete and they're looking to leave their current employer, they have a new job lined up, a lot of times, the most important thing that I usually advise my clients is to make sure that that new employer is on board with understanding that there is a non-compete at play. Are they willing to defend it? Are they willing to agree to provide representation in the event that there is a legal claim? Do they feel comfortable with that? A lot of times, if the employer feels really like confident that they really want this employee because of their skillset, they're willing to back them.
Right.
But in many instances, it's going to be a deterrent for them to even hire. Once they learn of it, they're like, they don't want to be involved in a legal battle with a, with another employer, even if they don't feel that it's enforceable, just to get involved in that is just something that's a liability concern that's just going to hit what they value the most, which is money. So from that perspective, I think it's, it's another form of a deterrent that it completely puts the employee in a very difficult position.
And we all know that H R, human resources of companies, they, their jobs are to avoid problems.
Yeah, they're, they're
So if you're coming with one of these contracts, you're potentially a problem.
Absolutely.
And so if there's another person with the same qualifications, they'll probably go to that person who is not coming with potential problems.
Absolutely.
And have you seen the the usage of these contracts expand during your, your time in the profession?
I have seen them expand. I've seen them not only expand in terms of onboarding at the time of when somebody is being brought into a job and an employee takes that position, coming in from another position, but also sometimes even during employment and even sometimes after the end of employment. At the end of employment, I've seen it happen, especially when there is a termination without cause. The employer is aware that at that point, that likely that non-compete that they originally had signed is likely unenforceable. And so they double down on it and say, well, you know, you signed this before, we just want to make sure that as a part of this new agreement where we terminated you, maybe we did it illegally, but you're not going to say that it was illegal. That you're going to now sign this severance agreement or some form of a separation agreement where we'll add this non-compete, but it's the same as what you had before, so it's just the same thing. And so employees end up being, okay, so it's the same thing, so I'll just sign it. Take on the consideration of whatever severance amount that they're getting, sign off on it, and then they're bound by by a new non-compete.
So one more
One more additional.
bargain.
Yes.
Yeah. And, you know, the, the Attorney General has a proposal saying that the Attorney General should have jurisdictions over these cases. So somebody could go to the Attorney General if they can't afford a private lawyer. What do you think about that?
I think that, I think that there definitely should be access for all people to enforcing their rights against such type of agreements. But I do think that having and maintaining a private cause of action with language that provides access to attorney's fees and other remedies, I think, is beneficial because, you know, the state's resources are always somewhat impacted and
Right.
some may, sometimes may limit the ability for an individual to get access to justice. And a lot of times, when somebody is in a financial distress as an employee, having left an employer or being stuck and not being able to find a new job, time is of the essence. And so that could be a major issue.
Yeah, and the fee shifting provisions are often really good ways to enforce public policies. So, you know, going back to my human resources, folks are risk adverse usually. Once they realize if they're on the other end of this, that there is fee shifting involved and they sometimes reach settlement a lot quicker, you know, and it
Right.
equals the bargaining positions a little bit of the
Absolutely.
of the, of the parties.
Absolutely.
And then, Ms. Lee, do you know anyone else who's doing the work you do, who are, who are under these agreements? Like, is it becoming common?
Yes, I would say it's pretty common. I, there's, Mahir's representing someone else who was at the same shop. We left at the same time. There, at the time that I had left, there were, I think, about three other people under the same contract who saw what happened to us and I, I think we're probably deterred from leaving. And there are a couple of other shops that I know of in New York City who hold their apprentices under the same contract, unfortunately.
So different shops, but same contract?
Yeah, very similar contracts.
Right, so, you know, it is sort of amazing how these bad practices spread.
Right, yeah, and it's usually apprentices who are held under them from, from what I've seen. I think because an experienced artist knows better than to sign something like that. And because tattoo clients are not a finite resource, you're not going to run out of them. And these shop owners don't want you to know that and they want to keep you here so that they can take all your clients. It's, yeah, I think it just preys on people who don't have a lot of experience in this industry.
Right, right. And we don't, really don't want, you know, these practices to spread industry-wide.
Right.
I'll tell you, I was surprised when I got into the deeper research on this to hear just in how many different economic sectors these non-competes are becoming the norm. And it leaves people in this limbo of, well, I think it's not enforceable, but it may be enforceable, but how do I really know if it's unenforceable
Mm-hmm.
until I get sued
Mm-hmm.
or a threat to sue letter. But I find that, you know, puts a, as I opened with a clog in the economy
Mm-hmm.
where, you know, you want the economy to move and you want people to be able to go from job to job, become, you know, more skilled, take jobs because it's, you know, closer to your home, it's better for your kid's schedule. But all these non-competes make it so you, you can't do that.
Right.
Especially with places with several locations
Mm-hmm.
in geographic areas, makes it, you know, nearly, nearly impossible
Right.
to go to another job with a certainty that you're not going to have trouble follow you.
Right.
And who really wants that?
Right.
So hoping, you know, with, with this bill, we could have more of a uniformed, you know, application throughout the labor sector that, you know, we don't do non-competes. We have areas in the law already that deals with, you know, trade secrets, proprietary rights, people stealing business, that's all taken care of. But we need to take this burden off the individual employee. It's just creating an economy that, that, that doesn't work.
Right.
You're not supposed to have your life made miserable by taking a job for a year.
Right.
And, and when you leave that job, that job's supposed to be behind you.
Yes.
So I really appreciate the time that you took to come up today to speak on this really important issue. And as a fellow lawyer, I'd say thank you for doing your public interest part of your work is trying to help promote public policy, you know, that creates a legal system that we can all rely on. So thank you for your hard work in that, Mahir.
Thank you for that.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
And I think this concludes the hearing. You two are the final witnesses of the day. I appreciate it again.
Thank you.